I'd like to call the governing board meetings, order from Jefferson Elementary School District, a meeting of April 26, 2017, and it's about 7:00, 4:00 p.m. We'd like to welcome our students here today. Oh, I'm sorry. Our students that were the winners of the spelling bee. So, would you like to join us, come up forward and? I'm sorry. Should I say it again? Hi, just called the meeting to order without a microphone. I'd like to welcome the winners of the spelling bee to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, okay?
Do we do members present?
It's okay. We'll do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so may we have the roll call, Maria?
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Manufo Liaga Anawahi.
Here.
Clayton Koo.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
Marie Brizuela.
Here. So now we're going to review our board meeting guidelines that board has in front of them. Are you ready? Okay. All right, so let's go down to approval of the agenda.
Would I make a point to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did we have any resolutions on this? Yeah, so we do have to take the roll call vote. Okay. Yeah, okay. Because it's got that there. All right. So let's go on to item six, special presentations. And we have the spelling bee and like to introduce Peter Clifford and also, well, Peter Clifford first. Then you can do the rest. Thank you.
Thanks. Have the spelling bee winners kind of make a line right here, please? And certificates or? So we only have two winners? Three, oh, there's three. There we go. So there was five overall. So my name is Peter Clifford. I am vice principal at Ben Franklin. I showed up at the district office, didn't know that it was here. My first time at a board meeting for Jefferson Elementary School District, so thank you for having me tonight. I also, so we worked hard. Christina Crasasimo, who is an admin intern, and I worked hard to make a successful spelling bee. We had a great evening that night back in, like, a month ago. And Christina was unable to make it tonight, but I'm here to represent and want to make sure that our students shine as well as far as their accomplishments. So first off, extend a thank you to all the people who helped participate in the spelling bee, the volunteers. Tony Barone, Ladonna Baraza, Rachel Carrion, Aurora Cruz, Anne Jeanette, Matt Driscoll, David Finn, Roxanne Hannah, Kathy Kelly, Clayton Koo, Manufo Liaga Anawahui. I think I'm getting it. Sandy McCulick, Marilyn Newman, Melinda O'Neil, Nula O'Sullivan, Liz O'Neil, and Sasha Sabini. Tabiani. And then thank you to Maria for attending and Bernie as well for being there. We had 35 students participating, representing 14 of our different schools here in the district. So first off, introduce the grade level winners. We have a fourth grade winner from GW, Jasmine Vierenes, who I don't think is here right now. Okay, fifth grade winner, Lorraine Flores, from Woodrow Wilson, which is also not here. And Brandon Nagai from West.
Westlake.
Yes, thank you. Westlake Elementary, so congratulations, Brandon. And then seventh grade winner from Fernando Rivera, Mustafa. How do we pronounce the last name? Abuzeria. Thank you, Mustafa. And Matthew Gutierrez, our eighth grade winner at TRP, so please congratulate them. Mustafa is also our overall district winner, so from Fernando Rivera. So congratulations to all our winners and another successful event here at Jefferson Elementary School District. Thank you all for having us and participating. Till next year.
So if the students wouldn't mind staying, we do have some certificates for them. We also have a gift from the Rotary Club that they can take home with them.
Great, thank you.
So we'll speak to them afterwards then. Okay, so, yeah. So we have certificates for you for two things. One for the pledge of allegiance and the second one is for excelling in the spelling bee.
Our certificate is for Mustafa Abuzeria.
And this certificate of achievement is for Jasmine Vierenes, and I believe she isn't here this evening, but congratulations to her and we will make sure that she receives this.
But my certificate's for Lorraine Flores. She's not here tonight, but we'll give this to her as well, too.
And I have a certificate for Brandon. And that gets to be here. Where are you, Brandon? Congratulations. And gets to the dictionary.
And mine is for Matthew Gutierrez, and he's not here, right?
Yes, he is. He's right there.
Oh, my goodness! There you are. Okay. Now, we probably want to say a few good words to you guys. So first of all, I wanted to thank Peter Clifford for sending this lovely little thank you for us going. I thought it was very cute, very nice. Thank you so much. So, did you want to say anything?
Congratulations to all the winners. Was not able to attend this year. However, I love spelling and I hope you all, you know, stay engaged in your learning and take this skill, you know, with you as you progress through school. So thanks for coming out tonight as well.
Yeah, congratulations again. I had a great evening participating at the spelling bee. It's really nerve-wracking to stand in front of folks and, you know, and compete against your peers and your friends. And, you know, job well done. You guys were wonderful and I know that, like your family, we're very proud of you. Thank you.
Congratulations again to the winners as well as all the participants and staff and volunteers who helped make this a great event. Second year in a row, I still like going to it more than ever, so keep up the great work and congratulations.
Yeah, I was also sorry not to be able to attend this year. I've enjoyed it when I've been there in the past, but congratulations to all of you. And, you know, every child who was at that district spelling event deserves a congratulation because they were the ones who, you know, outspoken the other people in their grades at their own school, which is not a small thing. I want to know, what was the winning word?
Mundane.
Mundane, okay. And I also want to know, because this is a word that I have publicly failed to spell correctly, can any of you spell cartilage correctly? You don't have to actually answer that one.
Ding, time's up.
Go home and look it up.
Teachers are spelling it.
The teachers are back there spelling it. I'll get 75 emails tomorrow telling me how to spell it.
I'd like to also congratulate all of the students that participated and everyone that helped out. It ran really smoothly. I loved being there, watching everybody. And I know that it's hard standing in front of people and sometimes the word that somebody misses is a word they really know. It just somehow doesn't come out. And, but it's a great experience and they are all winners, no matter what, because they got to every level. And I remember getting a little, a little kind of little thing, a little metal thing that put on us that said, "I can spell when I won my class." But I didn't go any further. But it was someone that spelled the words more, you know, more words than I did. But I remember keeping that for the longest time and I was looking for it tonight and, no, doggone it, couldn't find it. Because I wanted to just share with you guys how important it is to learn to spell. And we had one of the first Filipino families in Daly City. Their son took it upon himself to read the dictionary from A to Z, a big one. And he was, people would say, "Well, why are you doing it?" "'Cause I want to learn every word." And congratulations, because I know you studied hard to try to win that, you know, your place. And you guys were wonderful, wonderful. So congratulations and thank you for taking on. And enter next year. Okay, so with that, thank you so much, everybody. I don't think we have any speakers on this one. So we have board member acknowledgements and commendations, so left or right? How do we want to start?
I'll go.
You want to start?
Shaquille spoke.
Okay, good.
You sure?
Go ahead.
All right. I just want to commend MP Brown, Ben Franklin, and Fernando Rivera Schools for winning the Honor Roll School Award. The 2016 Honor Roll recognizes public elementary, middle, and high schools that demonstrate consistently high levels of student achievement, improvement in achievement over time, and reduction in achievement gaps. In the past, several schools were awarded this with the CST as the basis. This is the first year that the more rigorous CASB is being used. So congratulations to those schools and all the students there, teachers and administrators.
I actually wanted to, well, I already mentioned the spelling bee. It was a great experience for me. This was my first one, but Ms. McCulick and I also were able to be a part of Sodexo's Master Chef Competition, which was very impressive. I saw some things that I wouldn't even attempt to cook and we had some students in elementary that were just whipping up some impressive dishes and I went home full. It was, I took pictures and I was really impressed and encouraging my kids to take on the challenge. But I wanted to thank Sodexo and the families for supporting their children because they got a little nervous as we walked around at first and I felt really bad, so I started saying to myself, "Let me back up so that we can help them get, you know, not be as nervous and get their flow on." But as soon as they got comfortable, they all just, you know, followed through to the end and it was just amazing to see that. And Ms. Kessler was also with us, too. And it was just exciting to see that our district is innovative and have partners that are able to allow us to expand the cultural antenna for our students. So it was, it was great. Because a lot of them had shared why they picked some dishes. And one of the students had said, "You know, this is a cultural dish for me and I wanted to give it a try." And it was, that evening, in my opinion, was one of the most complex dishes that was being made. It was, I would, I thought it was a beef stew, but it was actually something that he said it was a Mexican dish, so it was, it was very impressive. So I love to see that we're doing things like this in our, in our communities and in our school districts. So that was a great experience for me. I want to commend everyone that was involved.
So I want to commend a couple of events I've been to since our last meeting. Last night, there was the school district art fair and there was art projects from kindergarten all the way up to eighth grade. There was spoken word. There was a, I think a dance performance from, I'm not really sure what background it was, but they was all really impressive, so I want to commend everybody who was recognized at that last night. And then over the weekend, President Brizuela hosted a PTA honorary service team to recognize a whole bunch of PTA volunteers and their dedication for our schools. So I want to thank her for that as well as all the volunteers. And then I also, this is weeks ago, went to the literacy day event, the annual literacy event. That was great. There were hundreds and hundreds of people there, so I want to thank all the people who planned that event as well, too.
I want to give a shout out, it feels like this was years ago, to the, to Ben Franklin for their multicultural night, which had some really stellar performances. One that completely, totally stood out. I've got to give a shout out to a couple of students. To Samori McLeod and Bea Shelby, who did just the most amazing performance. Absolutely blew my socks off. It was the one thing that made every kid in that room sit quietly and pay attention, which was fairly miraculous feeling at that point. I also want to give a shout out that this weekend and next weekend, the Daly City Public Library Associates are holding their book sale at the 280 Colma Center in the space next to Men's Warehouse. Got lots of books for kids and adults for a dollar or two a book. And we will also, we've got the, not only the winners of the poster contest, the What My Library Means to Me poster contest, but actually, we're posting all of the posters because there were so many just wonderful artworks and amazing statements that students made about what the libraries mean to them. And as some of you know, the library is very near and dear to my heart and it, it just, it did wonderful things for me to see what some of the children said about how important the library is in our community and to our children. So come on out to the book sale, check out the art, check out the books.
So, for me, let's see. I also, well, everybody's mentioning where they sold me. No. I've been to several events and, and I'll talk a little bit about the PTA. We had, I think there was almost 100 people that responded and came. And it was, it was done, it was called One Community. And it was to bring all the ethnic groups together. So we had all kinds of food from everywhere. And it was just a room full of love and friendship and some people that had, who was the one that she said she got it back in 1959, something? She got her award there. But it was just bringing everyone together and eating and doing things together and saying, "We're all the same. No matter where we come from or what we look like, we're really all the same." So it was a really great event. So I thank all the ladies, and I didn't do it by myself. We had a huge crew helping out and it takes a lot of people working together to make something work. So we thank that. I did receive a card in the mail because we had closed the meeting in memory of his wife that passed away. She was active in PTA and active at Garden Village for years and still active all through the community of Broadmoor. And it was Linda Bia Genie who passed away and her husband had sent this and said that, I'm not going to try to read it because when I read it, it makes me sad, but it just said that he was really touched by this, by what we had done here. It is a piece of paper, a certificate, but it means a lot to someone that has lost somebody. And so he just wanted to thank everybody and he will never forget receiving that. And then I want to give a little uplift because we talk about equality, especially for women and for other ethnic groups, how we're trying to make everybody be all one. And we, I'm sure the board, you received this in the mail? You get it all the time? It's edcal and it's AXA group and it's administrator, administrator group. And pictured on the front page is four female leaders. They're taking the four top positions of that organization. And one of them, who's just became president, who's been with them for over six years on the board, is Lisa Marie Gonzalez. She was a teacher at, at our school at Policita. And she's the one that instigated and started the astronauts club that eventually sent a whole class to Florida for what is over there now? Yes, yeah, where the space guys are. Anyway, and, and the community got together and donated money to send them there. Those children were so excited and elated, came back and wrote reports on it, did everything they could. It made it an educational trip as well. And unfortunately, the principal at that time decided not to allow that program to exist the next year without giving a real reason, and she left our district. She now is the superintendent in Dublin. I think she said, isn't she assist, oh, assistant superintendent. Sorry, you're right. And, but she is the president of this association and she really is dynamite. So just wanted to say, we had her. Didn't get to keep her, but we trained her. It was the first teaching job she had. And other than that, I think I said it all. And then David Canapa sent something saying, "Thank you to the district for all that we do for our students." Okay. I did my stuff. So now let's move on. Administrators' comments.
First off, I'd like to congratulate the spelling bee winners who apparently have gone, I think. But again, it just shows that the. Congratulations. I think it's wonderful that we celebrate all of these and we bring them up here and they're able to stand in front of, in front of you and everybody else and on television. I think that's wonderful. And also, yes, the Future Chef Competition, which was almost four weeks ago now, is quite amazing. And it's not just the cooking, but the presentation. And so they had like strawberries cut really beautifully and it was just, it was very nice for, people plate things now very differently than they did 30 years ago. And it's, it's very nice to see that that's being celebrated and also that we're in a partnership with Sodexo. Not just working together, but in a partnership.
So most, what I was going to share was already shared, so I won't be redundant, but I just wanted to congratulate the spelling bee winners. I had the privilege of being in the final round. And you may have recognized the last name of the winner. He, his sister won the previous two years. So it's been staying in the family for a while. So I want to congratulate all the winners in all the grades that came to the spelling bee. It was a really fun event. I also wanted to, something that's new, different, that hasn't been shared already tonight, is last Wednesday, we had our stakeholder meeting for the LCAP. We shared the first draft and so we received feedback on that and we'll be posting that shortly on our district website with answers to some of the questions and any of the comments that were made. And then we'll be bringing the revised draft to our District English Language Advisory Committee and our Parent Involvement Advisory Committee in May. And then we'll be bringing the draft to you at that, after that. And then we'll be sharing that publicly and then hopefully in June, we'll have a final draft. And we're also working with the county to make sure that our draft will be approved once it gets to them as well. So I wanted to give you an update on the LCAP.
Well, I want to thank you, Sandy, for all that you're doing. And I've been attending a lot of the meetings with you. And you really are presenting everything so well that everybody's really enthused, enthused. So thank you for all that you're doing. So Bernie, I think you're next.
Yes, so this week was a week to receive lots of good news. I was going to speak about the honor roll schools that Mr. Ali mentioned. But that wasn't it. That wasn't all. We also received notice this week that Fernando Rivera has been awarded the San Mateo County School Board Association Kent Award. They will attend a ceremony next month to receive that. Westlake Elementary School was also awarded the California State Award for Civic Learning School. They will also be attending a ceremony in May to receive that. And the last piece of good news, actually, I just got this afternoon and this is good news and he said it was okay for me to share with you. Our own Mr. Clayton Koo has received the appointment for delegate assembly. There was an unexpected resignation in our delegation from our region and CSBA agreed to use the results of the last election to appoint Mr. Koo to that open spot. So congratulations, Mr. Koo. We will be whispering things in your ear that we want CSBA to be able to stand for and about and look forward to your service in that capacity.
So let's go down now. So a person's wishing to address the board. So we have two cards here. If anybody else wants to bring one up, now's the time. So I'll call on, oh, there is, there they are. There's another one. Okay. Kathy McKay, principal of Margie Tobias School. There you are.
Good evening, school board and cabinet members and community. I just wanted, Kathy McKay, principal at Tobias. I just wanted to formally invite you to several events happening at our school. You probably know about the carnival this Saturday, but, and the community's welcome, too. 11 to 4 at Tobias, we have our wonderful carnival. And it should be a non-windy sunny day, so great day to attend. Also, we have, the garden committee approved a memorial bench for Barb Svannik, who was our ELA coach that passed away this year, so I wanted to give you some invitations. Sent the invitations out to principals today and secretaries, but I wanted to make sure the school board and cabinet personally got invites. It's May 22nd and it'll be a dedication ceremony, so I just wanted to invite you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Terry Martinez. Good evening. I'm not really here to speak. I just wanted to show you, the board, a photo that I had took at my, my son, my grandchild, and my family. And I just wanted to get your thoughts on it. It doesn't have any, again, congratulations. In the beginning, they started at John F. Kennedy Elementary School with Mr. Harris as being the principal and Mr. Pond was the school teacher. Then they were transferred over to FDR Franklin Roosevelt and now they end up at Sunshine Garden in the third grade. This is one of the photos of my grandchild in the back. This is another photo that I took. You might not can see him. A little backpack, that's all you can see. And Mr. Pond, the teacher, is sitting right next to him. And there, there's a child in front of the classroom, which is in the same classroom. He's a very small, little, petite little one. Speak into the mic. A little small one, a little petite little one. Repeatedly, we, we heard that he is doing so well. He doesn't need to be with the other students. When he gets hurt at school, we didn't get a telephone call until the next day. And this is another photo where a kid actually. And this is another photo where a kid actually stabbed my child with a pencil. And we were not towed until the following week. This is another photo of another child of mine's. It's just sitting there by himself. And I thought maybe it was just something that maybe somebody should have told me or the family. They have, this is another photo of Sunshine Garden and his name at the very bottom, Gerald, Gerald Martinez. And it's kind of upsetting, it's just that he was not allowed to go on the field trip because he has like four marks and we were not told. When we come up to the classroom and there is a teacher's aide and another teacher assistant in the classroom. And my child was in front of the classroom reading an encyclopedia, a thick encyclopedia. Ms. Martinez, I, I need to, I should have probably said something ahead of time before you spoke. At this point of the speakers, we only allow them a couple of minutes to speak. And we, no, I've been, I, I just wanted to say, did you, is something you wanted to ask? Well, you know what, I have called you actually a few times. I have not, no response. I have called, I've called, but I'm not shocked that at this meeting, that you're still not able to have an open mind or an open ear to what I'm trying to ask you. All I'm just asking, you've made a comment just now. We are really the same. If we are really the same, then why not? But your talk, your time is clicking, so is my child, my kids. May I just say one comment to you, please? We invite you to please contact the superintendent. I did, several times. The name is Martinez, three different schools. Okay, so, okay.
Ms. Martinez, if you wouldn't mind, okay.
I know, I wanted to say that, I was trying to see what, what the question was going to be.
Also, I noticed one of the pictures seemed to be Westlake Park. It didn't look like one of our schools.
Yeah, we're not, we're not commenting on, on public comments.
Yeah, well, we're not supposed to, to answer it, but I just wanted to try and, I didn't know how long it was going to be. Okay, well, okay. And she doesn't leave a contact number or anything like that, right?
No.
Okay, and we'll talk about it later. Okay, the next speaker card we have, Melinda Dart.
There she is. Good evening, Melinda Dart, AFT 3267, with a couple announcements. And congratulations to the Spelling Bee winners, great job. Monday, you may already know, is a national day of action to speak out, to show support for public schools and for our communities. And so teachers will be out and, and we welcome the community, we welcome the public, we welcome board members. Now is really the time to show support for our communities and our schools. And this is just an action where we stand out on a corner in one, two locations, actually three. FDR folks are standing in front of their own school in the, in the sidewalk. And then there's another location, which is top of the hill, Daly City. And a third location is the intersection of John Daly and Park Plaza across from Westlake Shopping Center. And teachers will be coming out basically saying that we welcome all children and their families in our schools. And we provide a safe environment for all students and families and community members in our schools. And we want our schools to be community centers, not targets for private profit or for deportation procedures. So it is really time, I think, no matter whether you're a teacher or a classified member or a board member, to be vocal about your support of our schools in these times, which are disturbing to so many of us, right? And we also have another event coming up on May thirtieth. And this event is still being planned, but I do want to announce it. And it is, if I can just go over one second here. Monday, May thirtieth, three thirty to four thirty for educators and anyone else who wishes to come. And then in the evening, six PM to eight PM, but, and it is at Policita Middle School. And it's a conversation held two different times about restorative practices in our schools. The three thirty event is geared for teachers, but anyone can come. And the evening event from six to eight is also open to everyone and includes childcare and food. And we have a featured speaker, Dr. Loretta Johnson, who is a social justice and labor leader from Washington DC. And we hope to have other panelists, which we are in the process of getting for the six to eight PM event. So I will pass these around.
And on Monday, the first one, Monday?
Three thirty to five. Yeah, here's an announcement about that. And once again, we welcome everyone in the room and we welcome board members and administrators and teachers and classifieds.
Oh, and I didn't get one. Sorry. There's one, they're down there.
And here's, this one too.
So the next speaker, our last speaker now is going to be John Abrams. Ben Franklin PE teacher?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. As you mentioned, my name is John Abrams. I'm a PE teacher of Ben Franklin. And I'm here to advocate for the resurfacing of our field, our lower field. I understand that it is no small request, but it has been a gripe now for years, even prior to me being there. It has become nearly unusable in recent years due to the poor maintenance and the potholes due to the gophers. It seems, by way of just looking at it from a distance, it looks nice, especially after the rain. You know, it's nice and green, but as you walk on it, you'll, you'll see that it's not quite an even surface and it's quite frankly, a liability for our students. And it is quite a disservice to our students. And I'm hoping to rekindle the, the conversation to, that would eventually lead to hopefully resurfacing our field. Last year, we were talking with SH and/or SI there for a little while regarding potentially going in on the field and, and making that happen. And that all got put on hold due to the water districts projects. And so that took precedence, but the opportunities would be endless, endless for our, our program, our PE department, including, you know, any field sport you can imagine, ultimate frisbee to football, to soccer, to softball, to just capture a flag, you know, just running around. And that's not to mention how much of an asset that would be to our sports program. I just got finished coaching both the boys and the girls soccer team. And we, and we practice in the gym, which works. You know, I'm not going to complain, we have a beautiful gym. But then we're, we're going to TRP to play on a much larger surface on a field. And so it just would be amazing. It would be lovely to maybe begin that conversation again, working towards potentially resurfacing our field or working with SI or SH or some other private organization. And that's all I got for you. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Any questions? No.
It's not that we're not interested, it's just that we're not allowed to speak on these items. I said, it's not that we're not interested, but the law prevents us to respond to comments that come up. Because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, of course, yeah, yeah.
But it might be someday.
I'm not entirely familiar with all of these things, but-
Yeah, I don't, I didn't think you did, probably because, first time I've seen you. Okay. But we might be able to look at it. Okay, so, um, let's go down to our consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
All in favor? Oh, wait, this is where we have to do the roll call, the roll call.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Ms. Leah Inga Anawahi?
Aye.
Mr. Koo?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizwella?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're going to go down to item D. So this is the Resolution seventeen oh four twenty-six B, Day of the Teacher.
I move that we accept the resolution for the Day of the Teacher, May ninth, two thousand and seventeen.
Is this a second?
I'll second that. But I also wanted to say that this is our, you know, one of our many ways, I hope, that we recognize that the teachers here are an absolutely essential resource for our district. I think it summed up there that the teachers and certific- and other certificated personnel bear for society the responsibility for directing our country's most vital resource, which is to say, the education of our children. So just, just wanted to give a little bit of what, what we're doing and why.
And I hear there's a lot of treats that day at the school.
Oh, I know what I mean.
So, can we vote, can we vote on this?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Ms. Leah Inga Anawahi?
Aye.
Mr. Koo?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizwella?
Aye.
So now we have another resolution under item E, seventeen oh four twenty-six E, National School Nurse Day. Is there a motion on that?
And before we make the motion, just another group of our people who do amazing things for our children and in this case are terrifically overworked and want to say how much I appreciate what they do, that they managed to pull that off. So I will make a motion that we approve Resolution seventeen oh four twenty-six E, the National School Nurse Day, to recognize them on May tenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Is this a second?
Second.
Okay, so can we call Leah?
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Ms. Leah Inga Anawahi?
Aye.
Mr. Koo?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizwella?
Aye.
So, let's go on to H, After School Sports Program Updates.
Yes, I'd like to invite Mr. Nicholas Wolf, teacher at Ben Franklin and the After School Sports Facilitator, who's going to share updates about this year's sports programs in our school districts in our middle schools, Ben Franklin, Fernando Rivera, Franklin D. Roosevelt, and Thomas R. Policita Schools. And he's brought along some students who will help him share.
Hi.
Hi.
Aye. I brought Aleah, Haysa, and Kristen. They're all Ben Franklin student athletes. At the end, I figured you guys could ask them a question or two, if you had one. They all played volleyball for me. Aleah also ran track and Haysa ran track and played soccer as well. So this is the second year of doing sport or of bringing sports back. I apologize if I seem a little nervous. I came a year ago, I was nervous then too. Thought I'd be a little less nervous, but it doesn't seem so. But I have notes. So soccer was new this year. We, we added soccer. So last year, we had girls volleyball and boys volleyball and track, which we have two, a boys team and a girls team for that. And so we added soccer this year and played all the games at Policita. And so that was fun and exciting, adding that. And, you know, I, I hope that we, you know, improve that program, make it a little bit bigger coming up next year. I do want to kind of echo the comments that Mr. Abrams made about, about the field and just the desire to have something for them to practice on as well as another area for us to use for PE. Just wanted to kind of go through a couple of things that, or a couple developments that student athletes make that I kind of jotted down here. And I'm sure that these students would agree, but, you know, student athletes develop friendship and camaraderie. They develop teamwork skills. They develop respect for coaches, teammates, opponents, officials. They gain a sense that they're part of something. They develop self-discipline and patience and perseverance. Many important life, life lessons. And, and at the beginning of the school board meeting, we were talking about the community events that you guys attended. And, you know, these, these sporting events fall right in line with that as well. It's definitely community building, not only the athletes and the coaches, but family members, little brothers and sisters and cousins and moms and dads and teachers. Your English teacher comes out to watch you run track or, you know, it's just, it's really a, it's a fun event. Just, you know, all these things that we put together, so. If there's any questions for me or any of the athletes, I'd be happy to answer them.
And if anyone wants to?
So I heard you all play volleyball?
Yeah.
Do you want to pursue that in high school?
Yes.
What was your record?
Okay.
Awesome. I, I, I want to commend you, Mr. Wolf, because a lot of times when we speak of education, we don't always touch the arts, we don't always touch the physical part about it. And I'm glad to hear that you guys are active because when you learn, the younger you learn to create more positive and healthy habits, the more successful you will be at retaining them. So being active at this age and remaining active later on in life will serve you well. But I, I want to say that I know that we support a lot of the work that you're doing. I want to actually hear from each of you what your positive experiences are with the after school sports program.
I, myself, I met Aleah.
Into the microphone, sorry.
I, myself, I met Aleah and I barely talked to a lot of people. At the beginning of the year, I was mostly with the eighth graders. And from like Mr. Wolf's class, I met Aleah and we joined volleyball and track together and got way closer and like, I, like I enjoyed sports more. And like, I wanted to like represent the school more and more, so I joined a lot of sports.
Instead of being usually just staying at home and not being active most of the time doing sports, it made me learn how fun it was and how it was okay to be active. And it also helped me, like motivated me to keep my grades up because to do sports, you had to get good comments from your teacher and have a good GPA.
So I got to meet new people through volleyball and I got to play against other schools and I got to see people I didn't really see every day. And then, yeah, I got to play with my friends. And it encouraged me to stay active through the school year.
That's right.
Great, that's awesome.
When you're in the after school sports program, do you also focus on or talk about nutrition and how to eat? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Whenever we had like games, we'd talk about eating properly and then for track, we know that some people might not be able to eat breakfast or lunch. So then they bought like a box of apples before the track meet and then we got to eat there and they just provide us like-
Great, good, alright.
I was going to say, it's great to hear that there's actually soccer this year. I was wondering how that went this year or how, how the first year of soccer was.
It was, it was really fun. We had, so each school played every other school one time, so three- It was, it was really fun. We had, so each school played every other school one time, so three games total. Had a really good association that officiated the games. You know, I, I thought it was fairly competitive. There were some, you know, some games were, were not so competitive. But all in all, I thought it was a good experience for all four schools. You know, soccer's a really fun sport to watch and, yeah, it was exciting. A lot of parents out there too, so it was great. I do wanna just re, you know, I, I mentioned it in my notes, but I didn't really get to, to mention that, like, as a coach, one of my favorite things to talk about is perseverance and, and how important it is to like take on a challenge when it's difficult instead of like backing away and being like, you know, my overhand serve doesn't work, so I'm just, I'm just, I'm done, I'm gonna serve underhand instead of persevering and working at it. And, and you know, how, how rewarding that is when you accomplish something that's difficult. And so as a coach, not as an athletic facilitator, but I just think that that's a really important lesson that I saw all these girls and a lot of athletes from the other sports as well just really take on. So perseverance is, is huge for me.
Mr. Wolf, do we have a track meet coming up or are we done with the tracks?
We just finished it last Friday. Yeah, we're on the thirty-first and, and the twenty-first. That's another thing, I'd like to be able to promote it to, you know, next year when we do these events, like maybe get more folks out there.
Well, let us know.
Sure.
We'll put it on the calendar.
Okay.
President Brizuela? So I, I would like to suggest that we put the after-school sports program on an upcoming agenda so we can talk about how to support it more and address the issue that was brought up by Mr. Wolf tonight. Talk about it now.
We can't talk about it right now.
Sorry, we couldn't, well anyway, we can talk about it now, hopefully at another date and, you know, be proactive about the sports program. Because I was one of the things that my first year on the board that we did identify as a priority. And I believe that the current board members all here support athletics as well as academics in the school. So it's, it's definitely something that I'm interested in and we've actually talked about before that field. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, first I'd like to thank you for taking on this position and for coming today to bring the students. And I wanna thank the girls for taking the challenge to get up there and do it. It's not easy, and your coach just mentioned that. It's not easy to say, I wanna play and then all of a sudden it's, you're trying to learn everything, you're trying to get into it. But keep it up because now, in today's world, girls are getting scholarships to go to, to go to college with sports. That never happened many years ago, but now, now it can happen. So keep up and if it's something you really like, do it. If it's something you don't know if you'll like it, do it anyway. Because you never know all of a sudden which feels better for you. And I was just watching you girls and you're smiling like you're just so happy, you know, to be here and you're happy to talk about what you're doing. So that's a plus and it's gotta be something that you're probably bringing to them. I just wanna tell you that my son took on the position of coaching his sister's team for basketball. And he got the B team because the father, the grown-up guy, wanted to have the A team because he wanted them to win. Well, my son worked with girls that never knew what the ball looked like before. And you know what? He won every game and won the championship. And the A team didn't, I said, hooray! So it doesn't matter how good you start off to be, it's how good you end up. Look, listen to your coaches, give it all, go to practice, be the best. And whatever you decide to do and I, you've mentioned something, I have to say it because it's, I'm passionate about it. But I've been on the board a long time. When we had all the sports, we had the dancing, we had arts and, we had everything until money started getting really tight and we had slowly had to make it go away. I'm happy it's coming back. It's really important. So, you know, invite us, tell us when your game is. Don't tell me five minutes before, but no, that's, but tell us so we can go and support you as well.
There's one, the final competition of all the sports this year tomorrow at Polisita. They play boys soccer against Fernando.
Tomorrow, what time?
Tomorrow, the game starts at quarter to four, I would imagine.
So be there three thirty, right? At, at Polisita, right? Okay, I'll bring my pom-poms. Anyway, thanks for coming.
I actually did have some, I want, I just, I wanted to say there because, you know, you were talking about keeping on and, and it's important how good you are at the end. I have to say, I, I ran track and I played soccer in high school. We didn't have sports in my junior high. And I was probably the worst person on both of those teams. And you know what? I still enjoyed it. I made great friendships and I got a lot out of it. So I will say, don't even let not being good, even at the end of the season, stop anybody from participating. It's participating in the sport that is what really is wonderful things. And I will say what I believe Ms. Lea Anawahi said about you start that habit of fitness, of understanding what it is to push yourself to work out in your junior high and high school years and it sticks with you. I'm not in high school anymore and I want you to know that I still work out and train daily. And this weekend I'll be riding my bike a hundred miles on Sunday. So, you know, you can, you can keep it up when you set that, that base. So, go on, you don't have to be good.
I just wanted to add one more thing. My daughter played and the first time she got to be an athlete was at Ben Franklin. So she played basketball and volleyball and I think that was Mr. Parrish's first round as the principal there. This was a long time ago, but she, she was there. But from there she went on to Terra Nova, played softball, and then she got a full ride to University of Hawaii. But it started at Ben Franklin. And, you know, so I'm, it, this is just the beginning for all of you and it's, it's just an amazing ride if you really embrace it. But it takes hard work, grit, keeping your grades up and, you know what, just continuing to shine. But I think the takeaway, which I've heard from all of you, is the friendships and the camaraderie that you will be able to build and that is priceless. You will hold on to that forever. So keep up the great work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
And I gotta share something too because my son, when he was playing basketball, there was one, one kid who could not really do much. He tried so hard, but he was kind of afraid. But finally at one game, everybody kinda set aside and gave him the ball. He looked around and he threw it, he made a basket. And that was the happiest day of that boy's life. I mean, it, it, it is, it's about the team cheering for each other. And you guys, keep it up. I'm gonna watch you play. I'm gonna find out, we'll watch you play, okay? All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Lots of stories here. So I, Kava, San Mateo Program Update.
Yes, we have April Warren here from Kava at San Mateo, a virtual charter school that our district sponsors. And they're here to give an update on their program and try to make this a regular presence since we do provide oversight to the school.
Hello, Board, and thank you. I appreciate your time tonight. California Virtual Academy at San Mateo is having a great year. Although next week we start state testing, which is always a little interesting time of year when we move from taking all of our students who are used to working virtually into classroom settings for traditional state testing. So, interesting. As of this morning, we had seven hundred and twenty-four students in our school, ranging in ages kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. And we have already started enrolling for next school year and so we have twelve new students who plan to come and enroll with us. I provided, like all school, like all new public schools in California, we are learning how to handle the, the new dashboard and spending a lot of time taking part in the state program to learn more about that. So I provided some information there. As you can tell, we're doing really well with our suspension and expulsion, which may seem like a no-brainer, but it's actually not. Those of you who've worked with kids for a long time probably know that kids can find a way to get into trouble in any setting. And so while we're very excited that we're doing well in that, it, it is no small task. As you can see, our grad rate is continu- is concerning. However, we showed significant growth in all area, all subgroups. And so we are excited about that. You know, one of the things that we find in our school is a lot of students come in their high school years. A majority of our students who come in their twelfth grade, who enroll with us in their twelfth grade year are significantly credit deficient. And unfortunately, those families are looking for programs in which they can make up those credits quickly. However, our program is a comprehensive high school, college prep program. And so it, what we find is students who enroll end up frustrated because they thought they were going to find an easier route. But it does highlight the, the need to have a program in this community for those students. Those students who want to graduate, who are looking to graduate and for whatever reason have gotten off track. And so we are looking, in some of our other, in other schools that we operate in other parts of the state, we have a sister program in which is fit for those kinda kids. And so we're looking into being able to offer something like that or some sort of hybrid program for those students. In addition to that though, one of the things that we know is students who enroll while, while in high school, who take any future college classes while enrolling in high school, persist and continue through high school. They're more likely to persist and continue through high school. So one of the things that we are looking into offering, moving, is both a partnership with, to be able to offer college credit to our high school students. Again, trying to get them to take one class, get, you know, one college course out of the way. Will continue to get them to persist. And then also partnerships with, we actually have one, unfortunately. It was in its first year, it's a rough go, but we're working on it, is technical programs. So students who enroll with us would, we have a program to work on either, there's a health careers path or a culinary arts path. And so it's in its first year infancy. We have some kids, we won't have any graduates from that program this year, but we continue to work on that. Additionally, in the past, we have had some issues with not just us, also schools who offer this type of program, A through G credit with the UC system. We were excited this year that the UC system has opened up their vision a bit and are, are now allowing schools who operate in the online space to, in the past they have said absolutely not for lab sciences and visual and performing arts. And this year they have opened up that space a little bit. And so we are piloting some spaces for some students to be taking their lab sciences with us to get A through G credit as well as digital and performing arts for A through G credit. And so we look forward to expanding that next school year to provide that opportunity. So the notes that I had, are there any questions for me?
I have a question.
Yes.
On your suspension rate, I mean, I, I see, I see it just as very low and maintained. It, do you know off the top of your head as far as by grade?
I believe last year in Kava at San Mateo, we had zero suspensions and expulsions.
But you haven't had any in the past three years that you can recall? I'm just wondering.
Not that I can recall in Kava at San Mateo. We've had, we've had some in some other, some of our other schools. We use a program, Seven Habits of Highly Effective Learners and another social emotional program. So when we see students participating in behaviors in online classrooms or in-person activities that can sort of lead them down that path, we, we try to step in early and provide assistance both to the student and to the parents because a lot of times we're really partnering very closely with parents in, in this adventure.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for coming and speaking to us and letting us know what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going down to curriculum. I believe in curriculum. This is in financial. D, Resolution seventeen oh four twenty six C. It's authorizing competitive negotiations for Jefferson Elementary School District, that's a long one, procurement and implementation of network electronics.
Okay, I can, I can speak to that. We actually have a couple items on here that are IT items. And unlike the regular lowest responsible bidder that we have to take, we're allowed to evaluate the services or product that they're going to be offering us. So it's basically like a rubric for them that, you know, evaluates the references, the price, and the price has to be the, the highest ranked item. And so in, in doing so, we're able to contract with vendors who will give us the product or services that this district needs that's the best value for this district. And so in order to do that, we have to have these resolutions so that you are approving the manner in which the RFP is, the bid is being put out there. Otherwise we would have just to take the lowest bidder and they could be not providing us the product that we need or the services that we need. And so prior to approving the recommended vendor resolution has to be passed allowing us to do this process.
So why are we allowed to do this? Is it only for certain types of bids that we can?
Technology things. Because they really need to fit our need. And in order to work right with, with our, our setup.
It's good to know.
Yeah. And good to do.
Okay, so we need to take action. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution number seventeen oh four twenty six C, authorizing competitive negotiation for JSD, procurement and implementation of network electronics.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Ali.
Aye.
Ms. Leah Inga Anawahi.
Aye.
Mr. Koo.
Aye.
Dr. Douglas.
Aye.
Mrs. Brizuela.
Aye. So E, now I'll let you do it, awarding the contract, another one, right?
So is this the next step?
This is the, this is the one that was selected based on the process.
Based on the first one. See, first we had to say we can do it, then now we're doing it.
Well, I move that we award the project, it just says the project, oh, for district-wide network electronics. Awarding the project to Converge One LLC in the amount of five hundred and five. Wow, really?
That's the amount that they put on their bid, so.
All right, five hundred and five thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and four cents. For this project will come through the E-rate program and fund twenty-one or Measure I.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, did they have to add four cents?
Sometimes it's, um, they have like percentage of this, so at the end, and they can't really round up because they have to show how they got their numbers in their sheets, so.
If I may comment as well, when we're talking about E-rate, the government's gonna fund about eighty percent of this. So, you know, we're only gonna be paying in the end a little over a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, thank you. That's nice to hear.
You're welcome.
Say, my goodness, okay. So that, we voted on, right, they pass. Okay, now we go to F, another resolution. Resolution seventeen oh four twenty six D. And it's to authorize competitive negotiations for Jefferson Elementary School District, procurement and implementation of wide-area network. I made the motion, go ahead. Just gonna have to read it again.
Second.
Call the roll please, Maria.
Mr. Ali.
Aye.
Sorry, Ms. Leah Inga Anawahi.
Aye.
Mr. Koo.
Aye.
Dr. Douglas.
Aye.
Mrs. Brizuela.
Aye. First time I've rehearsed, caught on that. She's good at it. Okay, so, G, awarding of contract to Sines. For wide-area network connections, the WAN project. You wanna take that?
I'll make a motion to award the contract to Sines for the wide-area network. I'll make a motion to award the contract to Sunses, Sunses for the wide area network connections project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, pass. H, Architectural Engineering Services for Classroom, uh, Rest Room Wing. At, I know it was a tongue twister, at FDR Roosevelt School. And, um, do you wanna read anything? Do you wanna take care of this?
This is the restroom wing, uh, and classroom wing that is needed at the school to accommodate the growing, uh, population at that school. Um, this one and, and is the architectural and engineering services. Um, as you know, the school is built on or very close to an active seismic zone. Um, and so, we need to do extensive, um, analysis to determine where and how we can build there.
And, and the analysis will be coming later too.
Yeah, the, oh, the, the further analysis, the geotechnical analysis will be a contract that comes in the next, in an upcoming meeting.
Okay. So, we have a motion on this?
I'll move that we, um, authorize Deems, Lewis, and McKinley to provide architectural engineering services for the classroom slash west room, wet restroom wing. You're right, that is a tongue twister. Um, at FDR, not to exceed eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, I'm glad I'm the only one that always got my tongue twisted there. Okay, aye. Um, let's see, is this?
Get another chance?
The actual building that, uh, we're purchasing to be able to install on the location to determine by the analysis and the engineering services.
So, what we're actually installing is, um, portables, so to speak.
Yeah, it's.
It is better than a portable.
Much better.
It's actually, portables are considered temporary. This is considered permanent, but they are prefabbed offsite.
Okay.
And it's gonna be attached, right?
Um, very close to the school, not completely attached to the building.
The four classrooms will be, um, attached to each other and the restrooms will be a part of that. And there'll also be a crawl space underneath. It'll be level with the ground instead of like ramps or stairs.
Good.
And it'll have a canopy cover and all.
Great, can hardly wait to see it. Okay, so, do we?
I move that we approve the purchase of American Modular Systems, Inc. For the restroom wing at FDR School. The cost is one million one hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and twenty dollars from Funds Twenty-One and Twenty-Five developer fees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I think Phil said it first.
You win.
Okay, so, now J was something that, um, I got something, do we have to read this one?
Yeah, so now you have the updated, um, recommendation from District Administration on the contractor or the, the, uh, construction services to be awarded.
We don't have to read the whole thing?
You don't have to read that, you can just make a motion to, um, approve, um, the, the contract be awarded to, I, I forget the name of the.
The lowest response, it's Rodan Builders and it is the lowest responsible bidder. And these are all pre-approved because we have that, we, we pre-approve all of the, anybody who's going to bid on these, um, jobs for us.
So, I'll make the motion as we see it here, okay? All in favor? No. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Okay. So, now we're down to L.
Um, K.
Oh, K. I circled it and I was just, didn't go back down far enough. K is the Construction Management Services for the District Office Modernization Project, yay.
So, I'll make a motion that we approv- approve the Construction Management Services Agreement with RGM and Associates for the District Office Modernization Project. And this project, like others, is being funded through, um, Fund Twenty-One or Measure I.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Good. L, Food Service Horizontal Flow Wrapping Machine. Bid acceptance. So, this, this did go to bid, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, do you wanna read that for us?
Um, okay, this one is, um, well, a while back, um, I'm not sure, I think you, I, I informed you that we, um, got a grant and, um, Ms. Anita King, our, um, food service manager, applied for the grant and, um, it was a federal grant and we were awarded ninety-nine thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars specifically for this machine. And so, we're jumping through all the federal hoops of fire to make sure that we, um, do this RFP correctly. And so, we put it out there, we received our three bids. Um, the, uh, we, we are recommending the lowest responsible bidder. One bid, um, was a lower bidder, but it was, it was for a product that would not fit properly into our space. And so, that ends up not being a, a responsible bidder for what we're looking for. And so, um, the machine will cost, um, ninety-six dollar, ninety-six thousand one hundred and forty dollars. And as I calculated the tax of approximately eight thousand four hundred twelve dollars and twenty-five cents, um, it looks like the district will have to fund approximately five thousand two hundred nine dollars and twenty-five cents of this over five, one hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. And so, um, I'd like to thank Anita for, um, working on that grant. And I'm very excited to see this new wrapper.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to approve?
A question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what, what does a horizontal flow wrapping?
I think I know, like, if you just look at the words, horizontal flow, so that means things are moving across. And so, the little.
It's wrapping. It's assembly line.
The little, the little box that comes out needs to get wrapped with a cellophane type wrapper on top to seal our food and then get sent to the school site, so.
Because we have a central kitchen, we have to protect food between the central kitchen and the school sites. And so, we wrap it.
And our current, our current one breaks down rather frequently and, and is many times, uh, takes a while to service it and get it up and running.
And we're hoping to get a credit, a good credit balance for it too. So, in which case, we may not have to pay anything.
All right. So, now we'll take a vote, now that you know what it is.
Now that we know.
I don't blame you, you have to know what it is.
Yeah.
Before you. You'll see it at the next future chef.
All right.
I wanna try it.
Okay.
I wanna make a motion, I, I don't know if I missed that in the, in the backup, um, of us getting the grant amount and then the district picking up the balance of fifty-two hundred. Um, I just don't know, I, I, I don't recall seeing that, so I don't know if it needed to be noted anywhere.
No, it doesn't. It just thought it'd be, it's interesting information for you.
Yeah, so, thank you for sharing. So, I motion, I, I motion to, um, pass the Food Service Horizontal Flow Wrapping Machine bid acceptance in the amount of ninety-six thousand dollars, a hun- ninety-six thousand one hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you, Anita.
And, yeah, and huge thanks for that.
Thank you.
Like that, writing grants. What have we said?
Yeah, thank you.
There it is, paying off.
Under eleven certificated personnel, under item D, extended term substitutes?
Yeah, I can give a little bit of background on this. Um, on January first, um, a new law came into, uh, play in California, uh, which basically is, um, allowing public school employees to take twelve weeks off, um, for maternity, paternity, adoption leave. Um, prior to that, uh, individuals would, would just take the leave that their doctors authorize them to take, which is about four to six weeks, um, depending on the, uh, type of birth. And, um, so this has almost doubled the types of leaves for a good reason, um, that our employees are taking. So, this, um, this item here, um, creates sort of a new class of substitute. We're gonna call extended term substitute. And extended term substitute serves for at least ten weeks, has the credential that's required for that placement and is in that one placement for, um, at least those ten weeks. Um, and it can be for, you know, a statutory leave like maternity, paternity, but it could also be for workforce compensation or an extended illness. The reasoning behind this is that, uh, at that length of leave, the substitute with these qualifications essentially performs many of the same functions as a, a classroom teacher. And the long-term substitute rate that we have, it was not adequate to be able to compensate for that level of, um, commitment that we require. Um, this also allows us to attract, um, substitutes that have all the right credentials if they're gonna be teaching for at least ten weeks in a classroom. We wanna make sure that those students have an opportunity to be served by a credentialed teacher in that capacity.
So, I have a question then, so you just mentioned the long-term sub rate. So, do we still have a separate long-term sub? Is that for?
Long-term sub, uh, kicks in at thirty days of substitute. So, that's about a, about a four, five, six, five week, six week. At six weeks.
Oh, right.
And, uh, yeah, and, uh, so, and also that any teacher serving for long, in a, in a longer capacity that doesn't have the credential will be getting the long-term sub rate.
Right. So.
So, when you, when you, when you have the, um, does it go back to the original day if they're not considered?
Yeah, and, and this, um, and this will be retroactive to January first. So, anybody who's served, um, for at least ten weeks in, in a job, um, will get this new rate differential.
So, you, you were just saying that if, if they have, uh, if the substitute is not fully credentialed, they get paid at the long-term sub rate, but they could still sub for ten weeks?
They could, they can sub for, um, I think the law allows them to sub for the full statutory leave when it's pregnancy or, um, paternity leave.
So, it could be even twelve weeks, you were saying? All right, great.
Well, then I'd like to make the motion that we, um, approve a daily rate of two hundred and eighty-eight dollars for extended term substitute teachers, retroactive to January first, twenty seventeen, for those who are fully credentialed, ten weeks or more in the same classroom.
Second.
I think we got three seconds there.
Well, I think I probably know how it's gonna pass. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It did pass. Okay, now we get to our favorite subject. Board policies.
I have a couple of notes. So, I had two notes on the, um, board policy. One is just a, actually, they're both basically proofreading questions, um, or issues. Um, under Board Policy fifty-one, five-one-one-six point one B, um, the inter-district, under open enrollment, there was, just under the application and selection process, it looks like we have a, you know, enrollment shall be submitted between February one and then we have not removed the little parenthetical thing that explains what we were supposed to do there, which was in, insert the dates, so we might clean that up.
We clean it up.
Um, so that was just, like I say, my, my proofreader herself kicking in. But, um, down here on AR sixty-one sixty-four point four one, on page eighty-three, if you're cruising through them on here like I am, item six. I was struggling with the sentence here, cause it says.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow where you went.
Um.
AR what?
AR sixty-one sixty-four point four one A.
Eighty-three? I don't have pages, no, I'm doing. Still page numbers.
It's only a few from, it's, I have page numbers, it's eighty, page eighty-three. It's about five pages from the end.
Oh, thank you, that's better. I was going for the front. Five pages for the end, I could do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so on item, in the consultation with private school representatives, item six, and it reads, "In the event that the district and private school disagree on the provision, provision of or the types of services, how the district will provide the private schools with the, um, the sentence doesn't.
Doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense.
No.
And it doesn't, I'm not sure if it's not ending, I mean, it looks like maybe something got cut off or if they're disagree, is it disagreeing about how the district will provide the private schools with a written? But it looks like it's supposed to be that if they disagree, the district would, like the how, how the doesn't belong there at all.
Um, I'll take a look at the original and, um, and then come back and see if, um, what the appropriate procedure is and make sure we represent that.
The more you read it, it makes sense.
No, um.
I mean, what it is, they put two sentences or something and forgot to put a.
In the event that the district and private school disagree on the provision of or the types of services, comma, "How the district will provide the private school officials with a written explanation of the reasons that the district chose not to provide the services." And I think there's meant to be a full stop there, but there isn't.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's, it.
I know what it's, they're trying to say.
It either needs to, yeah, it either needs to remove the how the and put the period or how the district will provide is another question that we might be disagreeing on, in which case, there's another clause missing. So, like you say, if you can go back to the original and see what, um, what got lost there.
Okay.
It rounded me to a full stop. And that was all I.
Poor, putting it together.
Yeah.
Okay, so, anybody else have anything to?
My guess is that the how should be eliminated, but I will double check.
Right. That was my guess too, that I figured we should know what it was trying to say.
Yeah. So, do we have a motion for, ready for first, first reading on this?
I'll make the motion that we accept this for first reading with, uh, sending Mr. Verdalis back to check on the two minor issues I stumbled over.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, that, that takes us down to the end of our meeting.
Reports.
Okay, fourteen, reports from the board members on professional development. So, the Youth Cinema Project, uh, information and discussion. Board members Shaquille, Ali, Marie Brizuela, and Malafu, Leonka, Anoy? Better than I tried before. Um, will report on their learnings from their visit to the Youth Cinema Project in Santa Ana on March the twenty-eighth. So, would you like to start?
We have a little video that we, um, wanted to show so that everyone can get oriented to what we're speaking about.
Okay.
Is it, is it, is it looping?
No, I think it's, there.
This is great. The sound. The sound?
They're talking about your screen.
They changed their systems.
Yeah, they have a new system.
Oh, well.
Otherwise, we're faced to read it.
Yeah, I'm reading it.
If I remember correctly, during this time, the students are, um, discussing, um, the kinds of skills that they've learned through this project, management, time management, group management, project management, and, um, their ability to write, um, scripts from story ideas. I think we can stop at this point. And, and maybe the, the board members can speak about what you observed. If, if that's, that, that, those images helped, uh, prompt your memory.
Yeah, I was gonna say, definitely the images were helpful and, um, I guess to keep it simple, I can just point out the things that, um, I'll, I'll just highlight a few things. So, it was a great trip, one of the best, um, trips that I've taken as a board member. And what made it so great was that from the time we got into the classroom, we immediately just saw children engage. They were, um, like professionals, basically. And, um, so we walked right into, um, actually, the, one of the nine-year-olds was the director. She was the director of, of her film. She was doing something and then there was an associate director, was getting the students together and then a producer. They just had all the, um, positions down, um, and as they were working on filming their scene, other students were writing their scripts. So, it was very, um, uh, inspirational and enlightening to see these nine-year-olds really, um, in self-directed learning. The teachers and the, um, film professionals were really there as consultants, but the students were driving all of the, um, but the students were driving all of the, um, activity, um, so I'll just start with that.
Yeah, I, I was, I was just impressed, just as impressed, um, to see such young minds being actively engaged, as you mentioned, but, um, it was amazing to see their leadership and them being able to give directives to their, their classmates, um, and also taking the lead in, in those circles, because you saw some working on their scripts, but you also some, saw others planning all of the pieces that created this, this documentary, this movie, because it really was, in a sense, a small, um, movie set, literally. They had everything you would see, I, I believe, um, like, if you would go to Warner Brothers, just in a very small version, but all of it, um, the adults and the teachers and the professionals really just provided oversight, but they were the drivers, which was amazing to see. They were able to really create their learning experiences just by being given the tools. So that alone was amazing, because they were learning and not, not even, you know, when you see kids light up in the middle of their experiences and their learning without any real effort, you, you, you all know that, that is pretty amazing to witness. And for them to, um, result in, in, in a end product that they can all really celebrate, I, I thought was amazing, because they spoke of us being right, how they would lose kids from the school, and right across, you could see the high school, and they kept speaking to that, and I kept, I, I really was disconnected when they kept saying that. And then when we got into the classroom, and I thought, wow, if we didn't get a chance to see the high school, but what I thought was amazing, they spoke of the, the street that we did park on, on, I think it was Birch Street, but they talked about how if we were there in the evening, this street was infested with gang presence and violence. But this project, coming into this district and this community and this neighborhood, has really created a shift, a cultural shift, because they're able to see their kids create these films, which really were about their communities, and then being shown in their local community. That creates such a huge change. And, and that alone, and creating that pipeline, interrupting that pipeline, literally, to prison through education, that's really what we were able to witness through this project. So I, I just got excited going down, and I'm even more excited being back. And the reason why I'm even more excited is because what I, what I would like to say locally that I see us being able to connect to is City College has a ethnic studies program, which, um, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about, because I was a part of that in two thousand and nine, and it became, um, a certificated program last year, and then they partnered with CSM to create the certificate program, um, and then in the fall at City College, it's gonna be an actual AA degree in ethnic studies with, with a, a emphasis in Pacific Islander Studies, which is very similar to what we saw at the Achievement Gap with Kinsey Foundation, when they spoke to their curriculum, which is aligned with this. And, and we're, it's tangible for us to be able to create this here. So I just want to thank, um, Superintendent Vidalis, um, also our president and Ms. McCulick for creating the opportunity for us to, to witness it firsthand. They're doing it in Alum Rock, just down south. They're doing it, you know, and so it's great that we'll be able to, you know, talk about it and, and have it here. Our kids deserve it. They absolutely deserve it, our communities deserve it.
You didn't go, you didn't go right, no, sorry, sorry, that's right.
Can I mention something that Ms. Leana Anoai, um, brought up? When she said that they show the films in their community, they actually show it at a real movie theater. Um, so it would be like if our students, and hopefully this will happen, will get to show their films at the Century Twenty-One Theater. So I thought that was amazing as well, and, um, yeah, I think that was-
I can just say that I was, we saw it at the con, at the con, conference that we go to, School Board, and, um, I was, we all were impressed with it, so, um, we gave our cards and we told them, and I, you know, kind of tried to talk my way through all this, but anyway, and so when they called, I was really happy that they were, uh, interested in looking at us. And so when I, we went there to see the school and talk to the children and see everything. And by the way, aside from the, you mentioned about the bad neighborhood, the school itself was not a good school as far as, um, scores, a lot of problems with the kids, and it took a principal who believed that this would work, and he worked really hard with the students and the program. It, it brought scores up, it brought them to be really good little citizens, and something to look forward to. So it, it, it was, it was a win-win for everybody. And so when I talked to one of the, uh, people there, I said, oh, well, I think it's one of the directors or something, I forgot what it was.
The executive director.
Executive, yeah, so I said, I said, oh, guess what? I know just where we're gonna have that, that movie theater, it's up to, up the street from us. And they promised that at least once a year, they're gonna let, you know, city government use it, so we're gonna do it there. It's gonna make, make our little movie. Now, by the way, the movies are like three minutes. You know, the, uh, the lower grade might be only two minutes, but it takes all of them to work together to make that, and then they do a couple of them, and so when they go there, and the families go, or they, they tell their neighbors to come and see what, what I did with this movie, everybody's engaged, and it doesn't matter how short it is. They know that the children did it, and boy, that's great. Now, the program can go on every year, and then eventually it gets into the high school. Because Jefferson Elementary, Jefferson Elementary feeds into the high school, it can happen. So I'm excited, and we haven't heard back yet for sure, but I think we're gonna get picked, aren't we?
Um, we're invited, and we told them we would be waiting for direction from the full board on moving forward with this. Um, we do have some funds and an opportunity, I believe, through our parcel tax, um, to expand music and art programming, and this would fit in line with that as well as other opportunities. It is, it is a pricey, um, venture, especially the first year, where you need to buy the equipment. But I think after the first year, once you own the equipment, then it's just the consultant fees for the two artists who come into the classroom. They did recommend that we start with one classroom, um, for your first year, and then, um, hopefully expand further at that school, and then expand to other schools after that. So I think if this is a success, we could consider different ways of, of, um, finding funds for this. But I think for now, at least with one classroom for the first year and subsequent years, we could, we could use our, um, local funding initiative.
Anyway, that's, it's very exciting.
So what would be the next step, you know, to-
If the board is in agreement, and, and I think we have at least three who are, but we're not voting. We would, Ms. McCulick and I would then, um, work with the, uh, Youth Cinema Project to determine what's the best way of informing our different schools. And in particular, they highly recommended that there, that we select the teacher and the school, to be able to pilot this program so it can be most effective and successful. And we would probably look for a school that has a strong, um, they want to start with fourth grade, a strong fourth grade possibility and a strong fifth grade possibility, so we can expand in a future year. And then, um, once we're there, we could consider, um, how this might work in a middle school, and it looks different in middle school than it does in elementary school, but, uh, we could progress into, into that space.
I, I have a quick question. I know that in the video that we didn't get to watch, there was some mentions about how it ties to the curriculum, and I was wondering if you could maybe briefly mention how that, how, I guess the project ties in with that?
So, I mean, the whole process, it takes a year to complete one movie, and it's a short movie, but it starts with script writing, and so it fits into the writing standards of the Common Core, it fits into the, um, the speaking and listening standards of the Common Core, um, and so it really fits in, and they, they match it, they pair it up with the Common Core, but a lot of it is related to the writing, because they have to write the scripts and have character development, and, and even, um, the, you know, literacy standards. So that's really how they tie it in.
I, I must say that they were very serious about the writing part. They're sitting around in their groups of four or five, and they, um, judge each other's scripts, and they choose the best one, you know, and then they work on that particular script to develop their full movie. Um, they also, um, before they even get into that, they actually had to form their own LLC with whoever was in their group, and they had to learn all the business parts of it, including they have to get forms filled out that, um, for their, their scenes where they're gonna shoot, get permission from the principal to shoot on campus and off campus. Um, I mean, all this happens, I don't know how they were doing this within that hour-long class, I don't, or two hour, might have been a two-hour block.
That's probably happened in the fall.
All right, but a lot of things happened though, even when we were there. Students were going off and filming in other places, um, and the, the teacher had seamless control over all of this by just moving through each group, because they were so self-directed. And one thing that the executive director mentioned that is the ultimate, um, project-based learning, and of course, you know, group, group learning, um, so, yeah.
So to clarify, this, this class is like a weekly class, or is it like, or is it like a deal?
This is a part of their actual, uh, English Language Arts time, and then they had an after-school, um, component for people who weren't in that class.
It wasn't every day, it was once a week, I believe.
Yeah.
For like ninety minutes or so.
You said like all year round?
But they take a little longer, I mean, for that, it's like, it's not like just a short period class, because it's a little bit longer time, but only once a week. So that's, that's how you get to do more. But it's, uh, it's amazing, because they actually are writing stories about themselves and their neighborhood, their families, so they're really, it's, it's something, it's powerful. So they, you almost have to see it to feel the way we felt.
We will include, we'll include those links in our weekly information bulletin, so that you can, um, you can, you can watch the videos, we'll send you a couple of different links that they've given us.
Great.
So what was the next step you're seeing in terms of-
So the next step is that we would then start, um, speaking to them, saying that we do want to move forward, so they can start, um, selecting and finding artists for us, and then we have to select the, um, the school and the classroom where we're gonna start to roll this out. And as I mentioned, I think we'd look for a school that has a fourth and a fifth grade possibility, so it has an opportunity to grow.
Yeah, it's pretty clear to me, looking at it, we need to have some teachers who would really be excited about that, and presumably they would then, because this would be taking a significant chunk of time in the ELA block, that they would be able perhaps to make some adjustments to the rest of what they're doing, since I know the curriculum as it stands is pretty all-encompassing and all-consuming.
Yeah, the, uh, the executive director said, you choose your principal first.
That's right.
Because you have to have a principal that can handle this, and then you choose your, your teacher, based on that, she's, if you don't have a, a principal that could, um, accept this and work with this in a positive way, then, then it starts to fall apart, because you do need to make some exceptions to some things. And then a teacher, a strong teacher that is familiar with the content, that can also make adjustments, as Dr. Douglas, um, mentioned, um, so.
So in some ways, our first, our next steps might be putting out the feelers with the principals and the teachers to try and find if we have the people.
And they want to work only in Title I schools. They say we don't, we don't want to work in non-Title I schools.
That covers most of ours.
Covers most of our schools, correct, but only Title I schools, that's, that's where they want to go, because they want to demonstrate that this makes a difference in some of our communities that have the students that are most at risk.
I mean, if you take, if you go to a school where those kids are already involved in, say, some kind of cinema,
Right, yeah, no, it makes, it makes total sense.
It makes no sense, because this, what they're doing is taking children, and actually taking the children that have a story to tell, that they-
Or just providing opportunities, they will, providing opportunities that they will not get anywhere else.
Yeah, exactly, so it's, 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 it's big.
So we'll move forward with that, we'll include this as an action item in our LCAP.
There was something we all liked, there was something we all liked that day, remember, you guys?
The food?
Well, the food was good, but, no, when we first walked into the office of the school, they asked for our ID, and the next thing they know, they came out with a badge that we wore, and it had the front of our ID, like our driver's license with our picture and everything, and that's how we walked around the school, and I thought that was really good for security.
Yeah, it is able to read the magnetic strip on your driver's license or ID, so that you could, um, create a badge with that.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty, so, already said they might look into it for us.
We're looking into it, yes.
Looks good.
Yeah.
I have, I have to figure out how we can, um, do this so that folks who don't have IDs, our parents, don't feel ostracized and left out, um, because they don't have a proper documentation, so we need to make sure that we can do that, so everyone feels included.
Okay, so, learn more as we go along here. Number fifteen, board members' comments, reports, reflections on board meeting guidelines.
Would you like to start, Rebecca? Sure, I actually do have a report from a, um, subcommittee meeting. Back on April fifth, the, um, we met, and, um, Mr. Vidalis and I met with the Daily, the City of Daly City Subcommittee, so with a couple of members of their, of the city council, and with Pat Martel, the city manager. Uh, we just did, we were, we were basically touching base, we want, we did an update on where we are with the athletic programs, um, some of which are cooperative with the city, and we brought to them the possibilities that we're working towards with workforce housing, and we got some suggestions from them on some things to, to think about with working on that, that we'll be, I think, returning to as we move forward with, in that progress.
Let us know what that, what that was.
There were some suggestions about meetings to hold and ways of presenting what we're doing, and one of them being very much that, you know, that this is workforce housing for our school district employees, for teachers, um, you know, being very clear who this is for. And, uh, the final topic we just touched on was the, the supports, um, that we all, both the city and the school district are offering and want to offer, and be very clear about our support for the immigrant and vulnerable populations in the city and in our school district. And I think, um, Mr. Vidalis, I think that covered it pretty-
Yeah, those are the, the, the high points. There were some questions, um, around what our drug awareness education components are, with the, you know, did we notice a difference with the legalization of marijuana? And as I reflected more on that, I, I, I think I can say, yes, I think it's more available, it's more prevalent in our community and some of our homes, and, and so students are also, it's more prevalent in, um, for some, it's easier for students to get, and therefore possess. So we have seen a uptick in that, and so it has caused us to reflect on what do we need to do to provide appropriate and proactive interventions early, um, so that students-
Yes, to remind our students that it is not legal for them.
But what was the city's interest in that?
Um, it's, Mr. Buena Ventura, he, he works in, in the justice system, and so he, his question was just of curiosity. You know, like, what have you noticed about that, you know, like-
I'll be careful with, you know, people's intentions when it comes to, um, are they talking about education or are they talking about punishment?
No, they were talking about education, you know, how, what, what are we doing to educate our students about, you know, even though it is available widely, um, now, um, how do we, how do we educate a, a positive stance toward, toward this, and an appropriate stance, you know, that's not ever legal for juvenile to possess.
Right, you know, any more than tac, tobacco, or alcohol are, so it's, it's combining all of that.
It's really important, because I'll tell you, uh, Daly City passed that, uh, social ordinance, which says that a, a parent cannot give their child any kind of alcohol. That would include wine, beer, hard liquor, whatever it is, because, just because you're in your house doesn't mean it's legal, because the law doesn't say that for, you know, when you give a minor alcohol, it doesn't say, except for parents, it means nobody does it. So if they're able to catch them, and someone says, oh, they were giving alcohol to their child, and if there's evidence of that, that means that parent will be charged fifteen hundred dollars fine, first time, second time, three thousand, and I'm saying, why don't you arrest them, to myself? It's against the law. So I think Mr. Buena Ventura is probably thinking ahead of the game that parents may allow them to have access to marijuana in their house.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have any evidence that is being allowed by any adults, um, it's just more available and it's easily taken.
Okay, well, trust me, we will be hearing about it.
Yeah, well, right now, we don't have any evidence that any parents are allowing their students to use any of these products.
We're gonna do some education on that, right?
Yes, we are.
And so I think it's important.
Yeah, and like I say, I, I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, we were not making any decisions or anything. We were really just making sure that we're, we're communicating with the city um to know, you know, and make sure we all, you know, like, hi, here we are. Okay, uh so that was, that was the report and take a look at our meeting guidelines. I'm gonna throw in the one about supporting our district message showing up by arriving, starting and ending on time. And we gotta keep an eye on that, especially the starting, arriving and starting on time. We came pretty close tonight.
I might selected, we will work toward the future, learn from the past. Um we talked tonight about the sports program. It's great to hear about how we're expanding more sports. And then the idea of the Youth Cinema Project about trying to open film and arts to our students. Sounds like it works pretty well for that theme for sure.
So I chose, we will keep our focus on the best interests of our students. And I also wanted to mention that on um May thirteenth, there's an event, it is in East Palo Alto. It's called Reading Bonanza and it is um, it was founded by a Stanford alumni. And this is their seventh summer, but the reason why I bring it up because they have shown interest to bring it to North County and in particular um Daly City, to our district. Um so they, this is Stanford Giving Back Day um for East Palo Alto and it was created seven years ago. But it is a partnership of Reading Bonanza and First Book. Um and it's, it's pretty amazing. It's a great community event. A lot of um community organizations throughout the county um attend this, but uh they have reached out and I have asked them to get in touch with you.
If you wouldn't mind giving me the name, cause I get like.
Marlena Tuyasasopoborten.
No, I have, I have received many emails from Marlena before, so I, I will recognize it when it comes. Okay.
Uh yes, so I'd like to comment on, so I'm very glad that we talked about food tonight in our district. Because I recently uh watched a report, I mean, I watched a um a show about a report that came out about food shaming. So I don't know if anyone else saw that, but that's on everyone's radar right now. Someone even asked me, does your district do that? I hope you guys don't shame the children. So I, I said that none of us can micromanage every single cafeteria worker and their interactions with the children, but to my knowledge, we don't shame children or, you know, single them out for not having the money to pay for the food or that they have to go into the cafeteria early to get a breakfast. You know, so anyway, these are things that are on people's minds right now. Um so I just want to put that on our radar as well. And then also, um I think Ms. Dart mentioned it with this flyer, but a court in San Francisco blocked um the president's move to um take funds, federal funds away from sanctuary cities. Um so I think that uh it just shows that we were courageous in our stance and also, you know, the local governments here and the state of California. Um and that we were able to stand up for ourselves and know that we're doing the right thing by uh assuring our immigrant communities that they are safe here with us. And um but it just goes to show that a lot of the talk against even saying that, um that we don't have to be afraid. So I think that was um a, a great thing that happened as well. And then I focused on, we will keep our focus on the best interests of our students.
I wanted to add one more thing that's aligned with food and nutrition. Recently, Children Now had shared a report. Um and Children Now, we're on a, a member of Children Now is on the Samatayl, Samatayl County Oral Health Coalition. And they um had shared their report showing that the ratio of um oral health uh for our children in Samatayl County, for every child, there's um, for every six hundred and six children, there's only one dentist serving them in Samatayl County. And that um for, for Samatayl County, uh seventy-five percent of our families uh are on Dentical and Medi-Cal currently as of twenty fourteen. And so when we look at Dentical, um there's only forty-five providers in Samatayl County. And only eighteen of them as of this year are accepting Dentical. And the reason why I bring that up, because we speak to school readiness. Um and we know that in order for a child to be ready for school, they have to be healthy. Um when we speak of alignment of food, we speak to a child being um uh well-nutrition, but the issue with that is we forget that well-being is not just the neck down, it's your whole body. And um a lot of the children that are currently obese also have just unfortunately a, a wide array of oral health issues. And we've been seeing this more and more. Um and I know that we're seeing it more and more with our students. Um and uh at, from zero to five, where, when it comes to dental treatment and oral health, seventy-five percent of those kids come into kindergarten with, with infection and in need, dire need of dental treatment, but they can't get it. So when we speak to absenteeism, we have found that with a lot of the reasons why they're sick, it's not just their, them being physically sick, predominantly they're sick because of oral health issues. And so Supervisor Canepa, as of last week, has um met with some community members and he wants to take this up as a North County issue. And I encouraged him to speak to our superintendent because we, we should be talking about our children's well-being. But it was just, just, it was just deplorable to hear that, that six hundred and six kids have one dentist that, that provides for them in our county. It's, it's just wrong.
Thank you. Okay, so for the, for my, um picking one of our guidelines, I picked the same one you guys did. We will keep our focus on the best interests of our students. And I think we did that well today on many of the subjects that we spoke about and that were on our agenda. And, oh, I thought you were stopping me for a minute. So um I'm glad you brought that up. Um and I, I'm not deliberating, but I just wanna say, I would like to make sure that our children do have um dental services. Which is why if we do really go forward with our um community school, that should be one of the items that we have at that school. Um growing up, my, um I lived on, you know, by Polk Street in Jackson and my husband lived more down into North Beach. And the elementary school he went to had a, had a nurse, had a doctor, had a dentist. And they took care of them and he had not been to a dentist for several years because he came from a foreign country. And uh I don't think he liked it maybe so much, but it was really good. It was there and it was free. It was free for them. If we can somehow reach that, where we have a community school, um that would be really wonderful for us to do, so.
Yeah, I recently um had a visit to the Daly City Health Center, which is here across the street. Um they did some remodeling and upgrading and they think they put in two dental chairs in the, in the, in the health center and um.
Oh, great.
It's, it's a easy place to get to, it's just right across the street. And um there were some, there were some families getting dental care at that point in one of the chairs, so. Um it is, it is an issue and our students, we do provide a screening when they come into kindergarten. But you know, if, if the providers aren't there, it's hard to get the care. Seems like we need some dental workforce housing to make sure they can live in our county. There's certainly a work to do here, but, but they need to.
But I think the important thing is maybe the education that we can do. Uh telling the students and, you know, telling the, having the parents, let them know that it's important and try to find the resources.
Yeah.
Cause that is, that can be a problem. Yeah, thank you for sharing that. Okay.
Ms. Pizwell?
Yes.
Um we failed to also mention that you and I attended, well, you were there, right?
Yep.
Yeah, the, the um Committee for High School.
Yeah, I know. I, I had it written down, I didn't read it.
Well, I'll just say really quickly that we had a meeting and um we discussed workforce housing, um scheduling, restorative justice. And I forgot, cause we talked about a few other things.
We, we touched on um plans for um ethnic studies.
Ethnic studies, correct, and also community schools.
Yes. And also we were talking about having, doing better with the music program as far as.
That was for a future agenda item. That was a future agenda item.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, you discussed about.
We talked about it.
Have a conversation about that at a future meeting, yes.
Yep.
Yes.
We're making headway. We're trying to get back all the things we used to have for the kids.
Yep.
Not for us.
Good things.
So uh maybe this go on here. Persons wishing to address the board, oh, on closed session items?
She says, she says none.
Okay, so let's see. So I guess we're gonna convene to closed session.
Sounds good.
Good night, everybody. But you can wait for us if you want.
We'll take, we'll take five minutes recess here so that we can get ready and uh pack up.
Okay.